Next up is our esteemed archivist, John Erickson, with Brainerd Public Schools 150 Years presentation.
So we're actually at a very historical moment, believe it or not, for Brainerd Public Schools. So 150 years ago in January, the city of Brainerd made the decision to establish the first school board for Brainerd Public Schools. So you are now sitting in front of the 150th School Board for Brainerd Public Schools. That's pretty exciting, you are on a historical board. 149 wasn't as exciting as your 150th. But the work of John Erickson, what we've asked is, we really are going to spend some time this year celebrating what's taking place and what's changed in public education over the last 150 years. And so, Archivist John Erickson, if you get a chance before you leave our boardroom, if you really look at how the world has changed in 150 years, that's going to also tell you how education's had to evolve to keep up with those changes. And things are quite different. We talk about just even some of our parents that are in right now when they learn to do math in school, how our kids are now doing math even in elementary is very different than what we used to calculate. Jobs that our students are being prepared for are very different than the jobs that we were prepared for moving in our future. So I thank Mr. Erickson for being with us, and just if you can give us some highlights of what's to come.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We have on the screen a tentative timeline for playing out BPS 150, 150 Years. This is tentative because we're still working on it. It's a substantial planning process because it takes us through the entire year, including the summertime. Point of clarification, January 6, 1873 was the first day of school in Brainerd Public Schools. Today is January 9, 2023. Brainerd Public Schools at the time did not have a school building that was renting space. Eventually, it did get space. If you look on the boards behind you, there's a little block in the middle that shows where the first Brainerd Public School owned facility. John, can you point to that? You're looking at it, basically. Yes?
Which one?
It's the light one right to your left there. Nope, to the left, John, that's to the right. There you go. Up?
Down.
Down.
Right.
To the right.
Last one on that row.
You had Thomas Edison there, John, and he didn't have anything to do with it. We did name a school after Edison.
I was looking at the wonderful pictures you sent to us.
We did name a school after Edison, but that was a long time afterwards. The first school that we actually had, and this is something to bear in mind, I think, as we talk about Brainerd Public Schools, was, the ground was donated by a railroad executive. Brainerd itself is here because the railroad wanted to be here. And so, from the very beginning, we've been connecting the world through Brainerd. Brainerd Public Schools itself, in the very beginning, was limited to the district boundaries of the city of Brainerd. It wasn't until after that that we actually began educating people out, a long time after that, that we actually began educating people outside of the city boundaries. The city boundaries, to begin with, did not include West Brainerd. That was actually in Cass County at the time. And so, there was a school over there that eventually we gained control of, now known as Riverside, but that initially was not part of it. We had our first public school on South Sixth Street. That's where that little map indicates. The intersection of South Sixth and Oak Streets. In other words, where the, for some of the old timers here, Mr. Donalinger, for example, where the Red All Grocery Store was, the first Red All Grocery Store. And it was called the South Sixth Street School. They didn't work real hard at that one. We built it, we paid for it, it cost about $2,500. That was our school for the first, probably 10 years or so. The next school that we built was Washington High School Number One. That eventually burned in 1928, and we built Washington High School Number Two, starting classes in 1930. And that's the building that's there now and is being renovated, as the Superintendent has indicated. That building is basically 100 years old. It'll last another 100 years because it's been very well maintained over the years and now is being updated. Just to give you a little bit more background, then I'll go through that calendar you see up there. The first rash of building, that was substantial building, and there's some pictures coming around that you'll see, were four grade schools. These were built at the same time with the same design, almost to the point where they were indistinguishable. Woodehr, Lincoln, Lowell, and Harrison. There are pictures of those coming around. They were built in 1893, after the high school was built in 1884. We built a lot of schools. We put a lot into education in the very beginning, and we have continued to do that over the years. It seems like about every 50 years, educational facilities need to be substantially upgraded or replaced because they take a heck of a beating from everybody in them all the time. The history that we have is very complicated. It's going back 150 years. We've probably had, although there's no real good indication of numbers because they've not been kept track of over the years, 20,000 to 30,000 graduates over that 150 years. In the first years, the first graduates actually occurred in 1887. We had the high school at that point, and we graduated a class of two. Except, we really only graduated one. That's because we had a boy and a girl. The boy didn't finish his classwork. Didn't turn in his papers. And accordingly, the boy did not get a diploma. So the first diplomed graduate of Brainerd Public Schools, ladies, was a girl. Not only that, but she, her name was Sue Mulraine. And she came back in a few years and became a teacher in Brainerd Public Schools as well. The second class in 1888 had an exponential growth. Seven. One of which was a boy. Now, you get a pattern here. The boys were probably working on the farm, more or less. There wasn't a commitment to education at that point. But on the other hand, the women got it. And they were graduating left and right, they were leading classes and so forth. So now, back to the tentative timeline you see up there. We have in place at this point for celebration of BPS 150, what we call the exhibition. You see that in the first bullet point up there. There are three phases to that exhibition. It's an assemblage of 45 different exhibits at the high school. They're in the exhibit cases in the commons area right along the north wall of the gymnasium on the main level, and two other places as one walks into the high school. We will repeat, that exhibit will be up through roughly the end of March. Then we will substitute that out, which is a big task. We'll empty that out. We'll put in another 45 or so, which will be up through the summer, for those who would like to see it during the summer and who are not with us at the moment. And we will repeat that again with the start of school in the fall. At the end of August, we'll begin another round of 45 and run that through December. That's a significant amount of work. It's all, every bit of it, every bit of it is volunteer, volunteered labor. So phases one, two, and three. We have a number of events that are actually coming up that we are participating in in one form or another. The first one that's noted up there is the induction of the legendary Women Hall of Fame. And that occurs in the 1st of March, which is National Women's History Month. There will be five women graduates of Brainerd Public Schools who will be inducted into that particular Hall of Fame. A unique event will occur at the end of March, noted there, March 25. There will be a Congressional Gold Medal. The Congressional Gold Medals go back to the beginning of the republic. George Washington received the first one. And there have been very few of them granted over the years. The number that's used is 200, although I think that's probably a little conservative. This is going to be awarded to Lieutenant Colonel Hortens McKay, who was an Army nurse on the, in the Philippine Islands at the time of the attacks in 1941. She treated the wounded on the battlefield in Baton and Corregidor, and submarined out of Corregidor just the day or so before it fell to the Japanese. She will receive a Congressional Gold Medal. She's now deceased, so her family will be receiving it. These events occur in the Gichi Zibe, Ishi Zibe. That is a great opportunity that we have because of the public's dedication of resources to our benefit, the benefit of the children of this district, that we can use that facility. With respect to the Distinguished Achievement Hall of Fame, which is not noted up there, but does occur during Homecoming Week, that's a different Hall of Fame, that will be broadcast into every classroom in the high school for those students who are not actually in the 1,500-seat house of the Gichi Zibe. So we will be able to demonstrate to our children and to the public, including around the world, because those broadcasts go wherever people want to link into them. We have graduates who are in Southeast Asia. We have graduates who are in Italy. We have graduates in Japan. And wherever in the world there is a country, we have graduates that we have educated and sent out there. And we'll be able to connect with them through the electronics that we now have. There will be other opportunities for events of this sort. July 4th Parade, we'll attempt to put something together for that. Homecoming is coming up. We'll try to enhance some of the features of Homecoming during that week. I think very likely there will be some Veterans Day events that occur as well. And then lastly, Native American Heritage Day, as noted up there. The County Fair is another place that you will see talk about the 150-year history of Brainerd Public Schools. Now I'm going to take you through a quick slideshow. There are about six or seven photographs in here, which are photographs from the exhibit Phase One that is up in the high school at this time. And with any luck, this will work. There we go. We have made a special point of trying to recover before its loss artifacts from Lincoln School, which is actually Lincoln School Number Two. First one being in 1893, this one built in 1939, as you noted up there. There are a number of artifacts that have been saved, this being one. Another one I will mention to you because it's very significant, I think, to many people in this room and elsewhere. Those of you who are old enough to know that there's an old gymnasium in the Lincoln School. It had a maple floor on it. Probably had a lot of give and take in that floor for a reason that I'll reveal to you in a moment. The floor had an L inside a green circle, built into where there would be a jump ball situation in the middle of the court. We were able to cut out the floor. So we ended up with about a 6 by 8 foot by 4 foot rectangle with the L in the middle. District staff, thank you, Reed, made that arrangement. That was not a simple extraction. We still have that. And that will become a centerpiece on the conference room wall at the Lincoln Education Center, which is a remarkable facility servicing largely sped students in the district and beyond the district, an income producer, actually, for the district. It's a beautiful piece, and there'll probably be some form of a dedication ceremony for that. This is one of the artifacts that we did save. Here's another one. That's the classroom flag you see there. The blueprint, and here's where I want to draw some attention to it. To the right on that blueprint, by the way, that's a facsimile of the actual blueprint. We have the blueprints from the 1939, pardon me, Lincoln, in archives. That blueprint to the right is the gymnasium floor I just talked about. On the blueprint, there's actually some language on it. We can't quite see it the way this photograph was taken, that says "unexcavated" underneath it. "Unexcavated." When the time came to demolish Lincoln, we found that there had been actually fill put in there. And the fill was bricks from Lincoln I. They didn't haul them away, they dumped them in the hole underneath the gymnasium floor, which was not therefore part of the contract to be removed by our people now. And guess what? We had to cover that. We had to take that out.
Have they been there 100 years?
Pardon me?
Have they been there 100 years?
Yes.
They probably would have made it another 100. We could have just left them in there, you know? I don't know.
Well, we've got a lot of good dirt in there right now, believe me. What you see here is the 1954 State Basketball Tournament Trophy. I think that some of us have special feelings for this kind of a trophy, including our director to the far left here, who I learned today had experiences playing in the basketball tournament, not this particular one. This is Brainerd versus Spemidji. I want to point out one thing about this to you, two things. That trophy probably weighs about 50 pounds. It's made in an old-fashioned way with a lot of metal and a lot of heavy wood in it. It takes two arms of a grown man to move that thing. The second thing I want to point out to you here is, on the right side of the newspaper you see up there, it says Lakers lose to Rochester 74-73, play here today. The significance of that is, this is a playoff game for the Lakers in the NBA at the time, the Minneapolis Lakers. And on that team was Whitey Scoog. Whitey Scoog was a graduate of Brainerd Public Schools. One of our best. He was one of the inventors of the jump shot. The significance is, he was playing in that game while immediately above him, there's a picture of the Brainerd Warrior Basketball Team. And you notice that it says in the upper right-hand corner, "Scoog Sparks, 36-27 halftime Brainerd lead." That's not Whitey Scoog. He's playing in the NBA. That was his third championship in the NBA. That's his little brother, who was playing for Brainerd at Williams Arena at the time. So they were playing the same time. Two great basketball players from Brainerd High School on the same page there. This is a photograph of the class of 1925. You can get a sense of how many people are in a class back at that time in life. The fellow on the left is Walter Engerbretson. Some of you, probably very few in this room, would know him as a teacher at Brainerd High School. He taught American history forever, or world history, I think it was. And he was an outstanding athlete and an actor in plays in Brainerd High School back in the 20s. Then he came back here and he taught all of his life outside or in the classroom at Washington. This is another picture of him. There you see him in the middle. He was an actor in plays on the Tornstrom Stage. Well, there wasn't a Tornstrom Stage at that point. There was no stage there. The stage was downtown in places like the Park Theater. We only got a stage after the Washington I burned down. And then lastly, on the right there is a picture of Walter Engerbretson in his final years as an educator. This is a photograph of part of the teaching crew at Franklin in about 1991. Franklin shut down as an educational facility in about 2004. There are, there's a cat there on the right. We haven't figured out what the name of the cat was. We know who held the cat. What's missing in this picture is that there's a young girl in the lower right-hand corner. She's about three or four years old. Her mother was a teacher at the time there, and we were able to trace her down. She is now back here. Her name is Erica Parish, I believe her name is. And we have identified her. If you go to see the exhibit, you'll actually see her name in her picture. This is a photograph of a 1930 actual playbill from the first play on the Tornstrom Stage at the new Washington High School after the old one burned down in 1928. Notice that Ms. Tornstrom, that is the Tornstrom of Fame, and now Tornstrom Auditorium was the director. Ms. O'Brien was the director of the Ferries, if you know anything about that play. That's an important part in the play. Ms. O'Brien is Ms. Mildred O'Brien, who became Mrs. Chalberg, as in John Chalberg. And John Chalberg is the name of the theater at CLC. We have Ms. Tornstrom being the name of the auditorium here. Take that back for a second. John and Bye Clothing Store might be one that some of you will recognize the name of as well. The rest of them are long gone. This is a photograph from the senior class play. Two photographs in 1930. You'll notice the interesting way in which the photographs are secured to the paper. That's the way it came. This is a black photo book that opens up. Some of you older folks will remember how that used to be done. And that's, those are originals in place as they were glued down in about 1923. We also have, in our archives, we have writing contest winners over the years. And in this particular image, it's not possible to read it, but you see on the left, Jeff Spear, 4th grade Lowell School, 3rd place poetry, Mayhem in Room 24. You really need to go read that. I can't even read it here, but I guarantee you it's worth the read. It's like all, you know what is breaking loose in the classroom for that poor teacher? And he made a poem out of it. It's really quite remarkable. This is an iconic painting by Bunny Humphrey, who is shown on the right. This was a gift to Brainerd Public Schools. It was in Superintendent Gross's office forever. It evokes all kinds of very positive emotional responses about, from whoever sees it. This is the original painting. It's in the display at the high school. This is the 1997 inaugural season of girls' soccer in Brainerd. You see the names of various teammates there. Think about that for a minute. Those girls have now had 26 years that have passed since they were 18, do the math. Some of them may well be grandmothers at this point, but that's their first soccer ball. Thank you, Coach Harmer, for giving that to Brainerd Public Schools Archives.
My daughter on the bottom.
Ah, you're aging yourself there. And here we have, here we have one of our remarkable graduates, a member of our Distinguished Achievement Hall of Fame. This is Elsa Haush Garrison. She is a Getty Images photographer who has done sports photography only throughout her entire career. She has been to Women's Soccer World Cups, World Series, Olympics, Super Bowls, you name it. She's been there not once, but 15, 16 times for each of them. She is one of the premier photographers, sports photographers in the country. She learned her skill as a Branonian photographer on the football field here. That was her first learning experience. She went to the dispatch from there. Steve Coles is her first mentor. He's still doing it for all of us. And look what Elsa has done. She's one heck of a wonderful woman as well. This is Bruce Carlson. He is a four-star Air Force general, classmate of mine, 1967. In military terminology, only a four-star can be referred to as general. Everybody else, 1, 2, and 3, is an adjective that is lesser than general. Brigadier, Major General, Lieutenant General. Four-star is the only one who can actually be called general. Now, I can't list all of the assignments he had over the years, but I'll leave it at this, particularly for those of you who fly airplanes will understand this. I have one in mind when I say that. And that is that he was the commander of Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, the world's largest Air Force facility. He commanded that. Also the 8th Air Force, also others, but we'll leave that for another day. This is the National Teacher of the Year, Guy Dowd. And the year was 1986, and we have, Guy gave us the dedicatori plaque from that time. That's a picture of him. I hasten to add, in 1986, when he wrote a book about his experiences, he authorized me to use that one, that picture that is. We have had some construction going on at Washington such that all of us who have offices at Washington have been kicked out of the building. It's a remarkable building to be in at this point because there's nobody in it. And one of the things that's going on in there is that lockers on the first and second floors, warning to the public, we've got your socks, and we've got your love notes, and we've got your pictures. We've got the glasses that you tried to say were lost, but you were actually hiding them from your parents by throwing them behind your locker. We got them. And here are some of your socks, ladies and gentlemen. If you're missing them, we've got them. And other things that we won't mention. But this is an excavation. This is an archival find, so to speak. We can't go to Egypt. The school board hasn't authorized a budget for that yet, but I will be asking for it to be sure. All, we don't have to do that because all we need to do is dig around in Washington. I can't wait to see what the workers over there give me next. That also came from Washington. We have a million pencils. A million pencils, at least a million pencils, and some calculators, some of which still work. And this goes back behind those lockers probably at this point 30 years. This is Merry Christmas from Mrs. Hurley. We have different pencils. That was one of the more interesting ones. Here we have Cindy Clow, who is iconic. One of the things we don't do in this school district and probably everywhere in the world, we don't recognize people who are among us, who are iconic and who are respected around the entire country. And they start here. They live here. They're among us. There are many such people in this district, and this Cindy Clow is one of them. This is taken back in 1983. Cindy, if you're watching, you still look great. I think I'm at the end here. So, there are a lot more, but I've taken more than I should have of your time. I encourage you to take a look at the boards behind you over there. They address the first 25 years of Brainerd Public Schools. And what, one of the messages in those boards and those pictures is that every time something's happening here, that's significant here, there's something significant happening in the world as well. And those pictures try to draw them in on a date-by-date basis. So you see George Custer there. George Custer and Little Big Horn was happening about the time we were starting Brainerd Public Schools, to give you some perspective. Thomas Edison was inventing the light bulb about the time we were starting Brainerd Public Schools. And then I guess I will end with this remark, two remarks, actually. This is a basketball from about 1902. I can't tell you if this is the basketball that is being held by the little girl in the picture that's going around, and you can see it in the lower right-hand corner, the picture of the 1902 girls' basketball team. 1902 girls' basketball. We were playing intercity basketball. Think about traveling to Little Falls in 1902. By the way, a warning to you all, the first day of school in January 6, 1873, the next day, there was a horrendous snowstorm. People died. Cows died. Trains could not get through because of snow drifting, and went on for two days. That's the kind of weather these people, our predecessors had to go through. And the girls did it to play basketball in places like Little Falls. The unfortunate thing is, when Washington burned down in February 1928, the school board at that time said to the girls who had been playing pretty much all the way through, you can't play anymore. You can't play because it's unseemly for girls to be doing such activities. Too much skin, you can't see a thing in the picture, by the way, too much skin is being shown. And so that was the end of girls' basketball for 40 or 50 years. The last point, in 1898, the Maine blew up in Havana Harbor. Remember the Maine? That precipitated the Spanish-American War of 1898. the Spanish-American War of 1898. As part of the Spanish-American War of 1898, we recovered the Philippines in the far western Pacific as an American protectorate, and we kept it forever. We had men and women, but mostly men, stationed there on December 7, 1941. Over there, because of the international dateline, it was December 8. They were bombed. We had Brainerd boys from here who had gone to our high school, probably 25, 30 of them in the 194th Tank Battalion that was stationed there. That was the beginning of the Baton Death March. That was the beginning of the end for about half of those men. Half of them didn't come back. They weren't killed in combat. They died in prisoner of war camps from disease, mostly. Some of them did come back, and they had shortened lives because of it. None of that would have happened if we had not recovered the Philippines in 1898 as part of our taking over in the Spanish-American War. Now, I'm not saying that was right or wrong. I'm just saying the world is connected. We are all connected wherever we are. We're not isolated here. And when we send our students out, they better be ready anywhere in the world for whatever's coming. I hope you come and see the exhibit. We're going to have some guided tours during the month of February. We'll announce those later. We'll do that throughout the, throughout the year. Thank you for your attention and for your support.